Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay ginagawa Tayo ang matulong-tulong Napanglarin ang mahal Naglilala
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay kinakailangan Tayo na matulong-tulong Napakaunla rin ang mahal nating baga
Panahon na ng pagbabago At ayos ang mga dapat ayusin Tabak lang maging tungkulin Yangpamat mamamayan dito sa atin
Kapitang pagbabago patungo sa pag-asenso Magsikat ng mabuti at ng guminhaba tayo Agumalaki natin sa mundo at ipamalas Ang bagong Pilipino At bagong Pilipinas
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay ginagawa Tayo ang matulong-tulong Napanglarin ang mahal Naglilala
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay kinakailangan Tayo na matulong-tulong Napakaunla rin ang mahal nating baga
Panahon na ng pagbabago At ayos ang mga dapat ayusin Tabak lang maging tungkulin Yangpamat mamamayan dito sa atin
Kapitang pagbabago patungo sa pag-asenso Magsikat ng mabuti at ng guminhaba tayo Agumalaki natin sa mundo at ipamalas Ang bagong Pilipino At bagong Pilipinas
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay ginagawa Tayo ang matulong-tulong Napanglarin ang mahal Naglilala
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay kinakailangan Tayo na matulong-tulong Napakaunla rin ang mahal nating baga
Panahon na ng pagbabago At ayos ang mga dapat ayusin Tabak lang maging tungkulin Yangpamat mamamayan dito sa atin
Kapitang pagbabago patungo sa pag-asenso Magsikat ng mabuti at ng guminhaba tayo Agumalaki natin sa mundo at ipamalas Ang bagong Pilipino At bagong Pilipinas
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay ginagawa Tayo ang matulong-tulong Napanglarin ang mahal Naglilala
Panahon na ng pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay kinakailangan Tayo na matulong-tulong Napakaunla rin ang mahal nating baga
Panahon na ng pagbabago At ayos ang mga dapat ayusin Tabak lang maging tungkulin Yangpamat mamamayan dito sa atin
Kapitang pagbabago patungo sa pag-asenso Magsikat ng mabuti at ng guminhaba tayo Agumalaki natin sa mundo at ipamalas Ang bagong Pilipino
Ano, venan, venan
This 80th regular session is called to order With the national anthem Billied by Christian Gonzalez Pardon by invocation and recitation of the Councilor's creed By S.K.F. Press Walter E.
Let's bow our head for the prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear Lord, as we deliberate in today's session, give us the wisdom to overcome passion give us that understanding heart to do away from prejudice give us a foresight to know what the future may devise give us a courage and strength to seek the truth and what is good give us the facility of language that we may be understood and finally, our Lord make us worthy public servants of Ragai our beloved hometown we deeply care for and highly honor. Amen. For the Councilor's creed, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am a Philippine councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuits for happiness, peace, and prosperity I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official acts and as I tread the pathways of local legislation may the Almighty guide my mind and heart and I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
The Vice Mayor's creed, I am Vice Mayor and my covenant with my peoples to both myself and public service by divine providence and by the will of the people I am mandated to preside over the local legislature that with integrity and statesmanship I shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my peoples' aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity may the Almighty God help me to consecrate myself for the people I am called to serve. Good morning po, the secretary is hereby directed to do the roll call.
Honorable Elmer A. Linao Honorable Annabel Liapres Honorable Domingo Esedo Honorable Petronilo Jimenez Honorable Ricardo B. Aquino Honorable Romano C. Sulit Honorable Rodrique El Sandagon Honorable Julio A. Arrow Honorable Alan A. Angelas and Honorable Walter M. Ehhe All present Mr. Chair.
With all in attendance, the coramist is by declared. Next.
Next is for the approval of the Order of Business.
The Chair of the Committee on Rules is recognized.
Good morning Mr. Chair, this is August Body.
So, I move to open the Order of Business for inclusion.
Is there any inclusion? Counselor Liapres is recognized.
Good morning po sa ating lahat, good morning Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I move for the inclusion in the Order of Business under resolution for the first reading, draft resolution number... 88, series of 2025, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Honorable Governor Luis Raymond L. Ray Billa Fuerte Jr. To Install a Veragon Potable Water Generator System Within the Ragai Tri-Mobile Terminal Located at Publasion Ilawu, Ragai Kamarinisur." Thank you Mr. Chair.
Any other inclusion? Counselor Mercado is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the inclusion in the Order of Business under resolution for first reading, draft resolution number 89, series of 2025, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Kamarinisur 1 Electric Cooperative To Provide a Dedicated Transformer For the Veragon Potable Water Generator System To Be Installed At the Ragai Tri-Mobile Terminal In Publasion Ilawu, Ragai Kamarinisur," entitled, authored by Vice Mayor Gabani Iseniar, sponsored by Consulor Elmer Linao, Consulor Annabel Liapres, Consulor Domingo Sido, Consulor Petronil Mercado, Consulor Ricardo Aquino, Consulor Romano Sulit, Consulor Rodrique Sandagon, Consulor Julio Arrow, ABC President Alan Angelas and S.K.F. President Walter M. Ehhe.
Is there any more inclusion? I think there's no more inclusion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, since there is no amendment, I move for the approval of the Order of Business including draft resolution number 88, series of 2025, and draft resolution number 89, series of 2025.
There is a motion for the approval of the Order of Business as well as the agenda as amended. Any second, duly seconded, any objection? Hearing now, the agenda as well as the Order of Business as amended is approved. Next.
Next is for the reading and consideration of the previous minutes dated October 27, 2025.
The Chair of the Rules is recognized.
I move to dispense the reading of the minutes at the Sangon Enbayan on its 70th regular session dated October 27, 2025.
There is a motion for to dispense the reading of the minutes dated October 27, 2025. Any second, duly seconded, any objection? Hearing now, the reading of the minutes dated October 27, 2025 is dispensed.
Mr. Chair, since there is no amendment, I move for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the Sangon Enbayan dated October 27 on its 70th regular session.
There is a motion for the approval of the minutes of October 27, 2025. Duly seconded, hearing no objection, the minutes dated October 27, 2025 is adopted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Next.
Next is for the privilege hour.
Anyone who would like to avail the privilege hour? Hearing now, the privilege hour is terminated.
Next is for the question hour.
Any guests?
We have no visitor for today's session po.
Question hour is terminated. Next.
Next is for the reading and referral of proposed measures and communications for 10.8 resolutions or denances for first reading, draft resolution number 86, series of 2025, "Resolution Requesting the Coast Guard District Bicol-Legaspa City To Establish a Substation Within the Vicinity of Ragai Bay, Marangay San Rafael, this municipality To Conduct Marine Environmental Protection Functions To Assist the Municipal Fisheries Law Enforcement Team or Fleet," sponsored by Consulor Domingo Esedo.
What is the pleasure of the sponsor? Counselor Sedo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My colleagues, this representation would like to manifest in suspension of the House rules, particularly the three reading principle, then since this draft resolution number 086 is an amendment of the approved resolution number 57, if I'm not mistaken, whereas our in the exact location has been changed on the said approved resolution. On the said approved resolution, the location where the Philippine Coast Guard will be putting a substation will be at the Umon. But now, according to the Philippine Coast Guard, they are much willing to put up at Marangay San Rafael. Yung municipal, ano po natin doon, yung municipal cottage natin, yun na lang po ang napili nila at ang alam ko ongoing na ang pagre-repair doon ni General Ada kasi doon po talaga yung ilalagay. So, kung wala na pong gaanong ano, walang question sa body... So, kung wala na pong gaanong ano, walang question sa body, uh, magpapatuloy po ako na i-motion for approval na itong draft resolution na ito.
There's a motion for the suspension of the House rules. Any second, duly seconded, hearing no objection, House rule suspended.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. May I now move for the final approval of draft resolution number zero eighty-six, series of twenty twenty-five, resolution requesting the Coast Guard District Bicol, Ligaspa City to establish a substation within the vicinity of Ragay Bay, Barangay San Rafael, this municipality to conduct marine environmental protection function to assist the municipal fishery law enforcement team of the municipality. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion for the final approval of draft resolution number zero eighty-six, series of twenty twenty-five. Duly seconded, hearing no objection, resolution is approved. Next.
Next is for draft resolution number zero eighty-seven, series of twenty twenty-five, resolution expressing deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the bereaved family of the former municipal councillor Franklin A. Olanyo, who joined his creator on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, sponsored by all SB members.
The Honorable Chair of the Committee on Rules, please, uh, do the sponsorship.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is draft resolution number eighty-seven, series of twenty twenty-five, a resolution expressing deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the bereaved family of the former municipal councillor Franklin A. Olanyo, who joined his creator on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, whereas the Sanggunay Bayan of Ragay is saddened with the passing of former municipal councillor Franklin A. Olanyo on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, whereas the late Franklin A. Olanyo had served this municipality as municipal councillor for two consecutive terms from twenty-ten to twenty-sixteen, whereas through this public ser, through his public service, he was known for sincerity, compassion, and steadfast devotion to community development, whereas his demise is a great loss, not only to his family, but also to his friends and to his loved ones. Whereas the Sanggunay Bayan wishes to convey its deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the bereaved family of the late former municipal councillor Franklin A. Olanyo and to honor his service and legacy to this municipality. So, I move for the suspension of the House, especially the three reading principle for the immediate passage of draft resolution, draft resolution number eighty-seven, series of twenty twenty-five.
There is a motion for the suspension of the House rules, unanimously seconded, House rule suspended.
Mr. Chair, I move for the final approval of draft resolution number eighty-seven, series of twenty twenty-five, resolution expressing deepest sympathy and heartfelt condolences to the bereaved family of the former municipal councillor Franklin A. Olanyo, who joined his creator on October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
There's a motion for the final approval of resolution zero eighty-seven, series of twenty twenty-five. Unanimously seconded, the resolution is approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Next.
Next is draft resolution number eighty-eight, series of twenty twenty-five, a resolution requesting Honorable Governor Luis Raymond L. Ray Billa Fuerte Jr. To install a Veragon Potable Water Generator System within the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal Located at Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur.
What is the pleasure of the sponsor? Honorable Yabres is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the suspension of the House rules, particularly the three reading principles for the immediate passage of draft resolution number eighty-eight, series of twenty twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Honorable Governor Luis Raymond L. Ray Billa Fuerte Jr. To Install a Veragon Potable Water Generator System Within the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal Located at Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur."
There's a motion for the suspension of the House rules. Duly seconded, hearing no objection, House rule suspended. What is the pleasure of the sponsor?
Draft resolution number eighty-eight, series of twenty twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Honorable Governor Luis Raymond L. Ray Billa Fuerte Jr. To Install a Veragon Potable Water Generator System Within the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal Located at Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur." Whereas, access to safe and reliable potable water remains one of the most pressing concerns of the residents of Publasion, Ragay, Camarinesur, for decades have endured, endured the recurring problem of insufficient and unreliable water supply. Whereas, the local government unit of Ragay under the present administration is determined to finally confront and solve this longstanding problem through firm action and partnerships among various stakeholders. Whereas, recognizing that the solution to Ragay's water problem requires not just individual efforts, but the synergy of initiatives between the local government unit of Ragay, the Ragay Water District, the provincial government of Camarinesur, and the office of the Congressman Chiyusi Anthony Hori G. Hori Bata to realize the common goal of ensuring sufficient and safe water supply for every Ragayano. Whereas, the provincial government of Camarinesur under the innovative and forward-thinking leadership of Honorable Governor Luis Raymond L. Ray Billa Fuerte Jr. has consistently introduced cutting-edge programs and breakthrough solutions that transformed the province into one of the most dynamic and progressive in the country, inspiring LGUs like Ragay to pursue sustainable and modern development initiatives. Whereas, the provincial government of Camarinesur under the continuous and exemplary leadership of the Billa Fuentes has long extended its support to the municipality of Ragay through numerous infrastructure projects such as roads, covered courts, and multipurpose buildings, as well as comprehensive medical missions equipped with mobile laboratory, dental, optical, and hospital vans that brought essential health services directly to the barangays. The proposed site of the Veragon Water Generator System located within the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal in Publasion Ilawod is a property owned by the local government unit of Ragay, and its available space is more than adequate to meet the system's land area requirement of eight by fourteen square meters, ensuring a suitable, secure, and accessible location for the installation. Whereas, the installation of Veragon Potable Water Generator System at the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal in Publasion Ilawod will provide an immediate and sustainable source of clean drinking water for residents, commuters, and nearby establishments while long-term water system projects are being developed. Whereas, the proposed site is strategic and accessible, ensuring that intended beneficiaries, particularly those in the Publasion area, will have convenient access to potable water. Mr. Chairman, may I now move for the final approval of draft resolution number eighty-eight, series of twenty twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Honorable Governor Luis Raymond L. Ray Billa Fuerte Jr. To Install a Veragon Potable Water Generator System Within the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal Located at Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur."
There's a motion for the final approval.
Alam niyo yung ano, yung dati na binigay sa mga barangay na maliliit? Yung parang, yung, sa mga barangay, yung air to water, air to water. Yung binigay sa mga barangay na maliliit lang. Liboro, alam mo niya, dun sa San Rafael, liboro? Yung sadid lang, dati, ngun niyan dakula, una, sin dakula ka na yung kwarto. One thousand gallons per day. Air, 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 air to water, to ruse, to water. Gagawin pa lang.
So, there's a motion for final approval, duly seconded, hearing no objection, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you po.
We are competing with other municipalities kasi nag-iirenotan, so mainot na kita.
Next, Madam Secretary.
Next is for draft resolution number eighty-nine, series of twenty twenty-five, a resolution requesting Camarinesur One Electric Cooperative to provide a dedicated transformer for the Veragon Potable Water Generator System to be installed at the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal in Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur.
What is this? Counselors Mercado is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the suspension of the House rules, particularly the three reading principle for the immediate passage of draft resolution number eighty-nine, series of twenty twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Camarinesur One Electric Cooperative To Provide a Dedicated Transformer for the Veragon Potable Water Generator System To Be Installed at the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal in, uh, Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur."
There's a motion for the suspension of the House rules. Duly seconded, hearing no objection, House rule suspended. What is now the pleasure of the sponsor?
Mr. Chairman, may I now move for the final approval of draft resolution number eighty-nine, series of twenty twenty-five, entitled "A Resolution Requesting Camarinesur One Electric Cooperative To Provide a Dedicated Transformer for the Veragon Potable Water Generator System To Be Installed at the Ragay Tri-Mobile Terminal in Publasion Ilawod, Ragay Camarinesur."
There's a motion for the final approval of the draft resolution. Any second, duly seconded, hearing no objection, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, Madam Secretary.
Next is for communications information. Ten point B point one, letter from Municipal Mayor Benji G. Hori Bata dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five to the honorable members of the SB through Honorable Giovanni A. Senyar, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, subject draft copy of a deed of use of rock agreement between the local government unit of Ragay and the Philippine Coast Guard relative to the use of the municipal cottage located at Barangay San Rafael, this municipality, and requesting to pass resolution regarding to this deed of use of rock agreement.
This is referred to the Committee on Fisheries, Good Government, and Municipal Properties. Next.
Next, this is a letter from Municipal Agricultureist Mr. Benedict P. Almario dated October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five to the honorable members of the SB through Honorable Giovanni A. Senyar, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, this municipality, subject requesting to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement regarding the Gulayan Sa Bayan project.
This is referred to the Committee on Agriculture and Good Government. Next.
Next is DILG memorandum circular number twenty twenty-five dash zero thirteen dated October twenty-three, twenty twenty-five uh, this regards to the conduct of Philippine Councilors League, Camarinesur Provincial Federation's, um, year-end summit on November twenty-six to twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, in Baguio City.
Well, I have received communication, and I also personally called the PCL president. This has been canceled. Next.
Next is for the review of Barangay Resolution Ordinance Annual Supplemental Budget Development Plan. Ten point C point one, Kautusang Pambarangay Bilang Isa sa Taong Twenty Twenty-Five ng Barangay Apale. Pagbabawal sa mga galang hayop sa lahat ng pampublikong lugar sa Barangay Apale, Ragay Camarinesur.
Refer to the Committee on Laws and Review. Next.
Next, items, item numbers ten point C point two up to ten point C point nine. SK supplemental budget number zero two, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay agropason. Barangay supplemental budget number zero three, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay agropason. Barangay supplemental budget, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay buenasuerte. Barangay supplemental budget, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay kabadisan. SK supplemental budget, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay kabugao. SK annual budget, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay lanipga kawayan. SK annual budget, calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay kale. The same SK annual budget of barangay buenasuerte.
All items are referred to the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Next.
Next is for the committee reports for Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform. A letter from Ms. Deborah de Los Santos, Banga Caibes, Ragay Camarinesur, dated October twen, October one, twenty twenty-five to honorable members of the SB through Honorable Giovanni A. Senyar, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, subject requesting to attend the session regarding the veterinary health certificates and animal inspection certificates.
Counselor Sandagon is recognized as Chair of the Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform.
Morning po, Mr. Chairman, and all members of Sanggunay Bayan. Committee Agri, Committee Report, Committee on Agriculture, Agrarian Reform, October twenty twenty-two. Subject, letter from Ms. Deborah de Los Santos, Banga Caibes, Ragay Camarinesur, dated October one, twenty twenty-five, honorable members of the Sanggunay Bayan, Ragay, Camarinesur, through Giovanni A. Senyar, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, subject requesting to attend the session regarding the veterinary health certificate and animal inspection certificate. Findings, the issuance of livestock inspection certificate, LIC, in the municipality of Ragay was temporarily suspended during the outbreak of Afrika Swain February ISF. Prior to the ISF incident, the LGU of Ragay was issuing LIC to local hog racer and livestock traders. However, veterinary health certificates, BHC, were not issued by the LGU due to absence of house veterinarian at the time. The municipality is now free from ISF in the recognition post surveillance for ISF, RAS, ISF. Certification is due to renewal, which is required every three years. To maintain ISF pre-status, the issuance of shipping permits remains under the jurisdiction of Regional Office of the Department of Agriculture and not the LGU. The current fee for the issuance of LIC, ten pesos per head, which provides potential income for the LGU when the service resumes. The temporary suspension of certificate issuance has resulted in lost income opportunities to the municipality. As a local hog racer have been securing their permit in Del Gallego and nearby towns, and the existing municipal ordinance on LIC issuance may require review and amendment to align with updated nation guidelines and the municipality of current veterinary capability. Recommendation, in the foregoing finding, the Committee recommends the following action. One, the municipal agriculture mou and municipal veterinarian shall verify the regulatory requirements and legal basis for the LGU's possible issuance of veterinary health certificates, BHCs. The renewal of the RAS, ISF certification shall be provided prioritized pending the release of laboratory result from the blood testing of local hogs. The Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform shall review and determine the existing municipal ordinance on the issuance of LIC to ensure compliance with the current regulation and the include provision of the issuance of BHCs, BHCs authorized. The Sanggunay Bayan shall consider the reception of LIC issuance upon confirmation ISF pre-status and compliance with the renewal requirements and coordination with the Department of Agriculture. Regional Office encouraged to clarify the scope of authority issuing BHCs and issue alignment with the regional and national policies. After the determination of Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform held by the Father of the Queen, the Sanggunay Bayan of Ragay shall authorize the reception of the issuance of livestock inspection certificate, LIC upon completion and confirmation and of the RAS, ISF renewal process and direct municipal agricultureists and veterinarians initiate the necessary steps to the secure authority for the local issuance of veterinary health certificate, BHC, subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations. Perdón, the Committee report that existing municipal ordinance governing livestock inspection certificates be reviewed and amended to reflect current operation, technical, and regulatory condition. Mr. Chairman, I have for the adoption of the Committee report.
There's a motion for the adoption of the Committee report. Any second, duly seconded, any objection? Hearing none, the Committee report is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pending po nung ano.
Next, next.
Walang reso, wala kang reso.
Next is for the Committee on Laws and Review. For ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay binahan proper, an ordinance creating the position of administrative aide-one in barangay binahan proper, Ragay Camarinesur, on honorary basis, providing funds there for and for other purposes.
The Counselor Aquino is recognized as Chair of the Committee on Laws and Review.
Good morning, Committee report. Uh, ordinance number zero three, series of twenty twenty-five of barangay binahan proper. Uh, ordinance number zero-three, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of barangay Binahan Proper, an ordinance creating the position of administrative aid one in barangay Binahan Proper, Ragay Camarena Sur, on honorarium basis, providing funds there for and for other purposes. Findings, after review and evaluation, the committee finds that barangay ordinance number zero-three, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of Binahan Proper, is a timely and well-founded legislative measure that demonstrates the proactive governance of the said barangay in insuring its administrative and operational efficiency. The creation of the position of administrative aid on an honorarium basis is both practical and beneficial, particularly in ensuring that the barangay can effectively deliver public services and maintain the smooth execution of day-to-day administrative functions. The ordinance also aligns with the principles of good governance, accountability, and service efficiency. By institutionalizing a support role within the barangay, it addresses the growing administrative workload brought about by increasing documentation coordination with higher governmental agencies and the expanding scope of barangay responsibilities under national and local mandates. The decision to establish the position on an honorarium basis also reflects fiscal prudence. It recognizes the financial limitations of the barangay while still providing modest compensation to deserving individuals who will assist in administrative operations. This approach ensures that public funds are judicially, judiciously utilized without compromising the quality of service delivery. Furthermore, the ordinance underscores the barangay's commitment to transparency and accountability. As it provides a clear legal framework for the appointment functions and funding of the administrative aid position, this not only promotes organizational order but also ensures that personnel assignments are properly documented and authorized by law. Recommendations, barangay ordinance number zero-three, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five is commendable for its foresight and practical governance approach. It empowers the barangay to become more efficient, organized, and responsive to the needs of its constituents while maintaining fiscal discipline. It is therefore respectfully recommended by this committee that barangay ordinance number zero-three, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five of barangay Binahan Proper, be approved and implemented as serves the best interest of the residents and supports local governance. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee report. And second, during seconded, hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted. Review resolution yan, tabi?
Yes, review resolution. Review ordinance, review resolution.
May I put lang ako, pwedeng mag-ano, create ang barangay ng position using the nomenclature of the Civil Service Commission. But hindi regular pero honorarium.
Ang job order, no?
Oo. So kung job order kasi, dapat ilagay na lang nila job order. Okay, ang ginamit nila 'yung nomenclature ng administrative aid one, which is a nomenclature used by the plantilla positions sanctioned by the Civil Service Commission. Tanong ko lang, tanong ko lang, hindi naman ako nagaan.
Pero kung nasa budget mapoy nila yan, siguro, pwederin ano.
Kung nasa plantilla, regular yan? Hindi, nakalaki honorarium eh, hindi pwedeng regular.
Para 'yung creation ng ano driver one sa mga ano, sa mga 'yung FMU, di ba may nagcreate silang driver?
Allow, allow jan, it is in the plantilla, pero regular yan, hindi yan, hindi yan honorarium. Sa susweldo yan ang monthly, naswelduhan talaga. Hindi kaya parang nagaganunan 'yung ano, tanong ko lang. Kasi ginamit 'yung admin aid one, the nomenclature.
Yung sa galing tama sa libro ng ano, Civil Service.
Oo, nasa ano eh. Depar review mo si HR, si HR, kung pwede.
Mr. Chairman, I move to lay on table. May up to father. Para po mapagkaralan natin to, kasi ako nga rin.
Magconduct na lang bagong committee report.
Saka 'yung iano, pagkaralan natin 'yung pagcreate ng positions ng barangay kung meron silang ano, power na ganyan. O sa lay on the table muna po.
Lay on, di ka na makandak ng bagong committee report? Lay on the table, diyan maano.
Lay on the table, uh, siguro ang invited ko rin pong ano, sa susunod na ano mag-
CHR?
Opo, magpaano, patawag na lang. Saka na rin po, ano po, ano po jan. Palresert sa lang tong legality ng ano nga, pagcreate ng mga positions sa barangay. Thank you po, ipatawag na lang po sana, sasakam na lang po ng committee po.
The findings of, the modified findings of the Chair of the Committee on Rules is accepted. Next.
Next is for the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. For appropriation ordinance number zero-two, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of the municipal government of Ragay Camarena Sur for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six in the total amount of three hundred ninety-four million, five hundred twelve thousand, one hundred fifty-nine pesos and seventy-eight centavos, covering the various expenditures for the operation of the municipal government and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose.
The Chairman of the Committee on Finance and Appropriations is recognized, Dr. L. Marilina.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and this August body. So after our public hearing last October thirty, twenty-twenty-nine, we crafted this, uh, Committee Report on Finance and Appropriation. Subject, appropriation ordinance number zero-two, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of the municipal government of Ragay Camsur for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six in the total amount of three hundred ninety-four million, five hundred twelve thousand, hundred fifty-nine pesos and seventy-eight centavos, covering the various expenditures for the operation of the municipal government and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose. The Committee on Finance and Appropriations, to which was referred appropriation ordinance number two, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, on the proposed twenty-twenty-six annual budget of the municipality of Ragay, amounting to three hundred ninety-four million pesos, five hundred twelve thousand, hundred fifty-nine pesos and seventy-eight centavos. After careful and judicious study, deliberation, and consultation with all the department heads during the budget hearing, including, uh, Honorable Liao Bres, Honorable Aquino, Honorable Sulit, and Honorable Sedo, hereby submits this favorable committee report. Findings, that the proposed budget was found to have been prepared in accordance with the existing laws and regulations, particularly the provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one, Republic Act Number seven-to-one-sixty, and the pertinent Department of Budget and Management Guidelines. The committee knows that the proposed annual budget supports the development goals and priorities of the municipal government of Ragay as embedded in its CDP Plus, or Comprehensive Development Plan Plus, and Annual Investment Program. It provides an adequate funding for, funding for the basic services, infrastructure, economic development, and environmental protection, and social welfare programs. Thirdly, allocates appropriations consistent with the mandatory budgetary requirements, including the twenty percent development fund, five percent local disaster resorption management fund, and one percent senior citizen and PWD fund, and gender and development plan and budget. It upholds the principles of fiscal responsibility, transparency, and accountability in local governance, and was considered, after due consultation, with all the department heads who were given the opportunity to present and justify the respective officers' program, projects, and activities before the committee. After thorough review and validation, the committee finds the total appropriation of three hundred ninety-four million, five hundred twelve thousand, hundred fifty-nine pesos and seventy-eight centavos to be reasonable, necessary, and supportive of the general welfare of the people of Ragay. So in view of the foregoing, the Committee on Appropriations should recommend the appropriation ordinance number two, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Annual Budget of the Municipal Government of Ragay Camsur for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six in the Total Amount of Three Hundred Ninety-four Million, Five Hundred Twelve Thousand, Hundred Fifty-Nine Paces and Seventy-Eight Centavos, Covering the Various Expenditures for the Operation of the Municipal Government and Appropriating the Necessary Funds for the Purpose." And this, I move that this, uh, report be calendared for the second reading on our next regular session dated November ten, twenty-twenty-five.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee report. During seconded, the committee report is adopted, and is also to be calendared for second reading on the next regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next.
Next is for business for the day, for second reading. Draft ordinance number zero-thirteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the municipal mayor of Ragay Camarena Sur, Honorable Benji G. Hurbata, to negotiate for and contract a borrowing facility with the Development Bank of the Philippines, establishing a standby fund for priority development projects of the municipality, and providing guidelines for its availability, sponsored by counselors Linau, uh, Liao Bres, Sedo, Mercado, Aquino, Sulit, Sandagon, and Arrow.
The Chair of the Committee on Finance is recognized, Dr. L. Marilina.
So, this is a sponsorship speech for draft ordinance number thirteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the municipal mayor of Ragay Camsur, Honorable Benji G. Hurbata. They negotiate for and contract a borrowing facility with the Development Bank of the Philippines, establishing a standby fund for priority development projects of the municipality of Ragay and providing guidance for its availability. So Honorable Presiding Officer, Sir Giovanni A. Senyar, distinguished members of this August Chamber, fellow public servants, good morning. In the Bible, there is a saying that where there is no vision, the people perish. Leadership is not only about addressing the problems of today, but also preparing for the opportunities of tomorrow. So we, as committed public servants, in protect to the needs of our constituents, crafted this ordinance. Draft ordinance number thirteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, on ordinance authorizing the municipal mayor of Ragay Camsur, Honorable Benji G. Hurbata, to negotiate for and contract a borrowing facility with UBP, establishing standby fund for priority development projects of the municipality and providing guidance for its availability. The ordinance that have been sponsored this morning is a step toward ensuring our municipality is financially ready to meet both. This proposed ordinance is also forward-looking and strategic measure designed to enhance the municipality's fiscal flexibility and support the timely implementation of development projects without interruption. Today, we stand at a crucial moment in the continuing journey of our beloved municipality of Ragay. As our community grows and our aspirations rise, so too must our readiness to meet the challenges of development. The measure I raise is not merely about borrowing funds. It is about empowering our municipality to act decisively, plan ahead, and invest in the future our people they deserve. In the management of public funds, foresight is just an important task for jollity. Our ability to deliver essential services and complete vital projects often depends not only on how much we have, but on how wisely and strategically we plan to use our resources. Every progress that our municipality achieves, a new road, a health facility, a livelihood program, begins with one essential ingredient, the will and capacity to act when our people needs us most. This ordinance embodies that spirit, a commitment to ensure that our government is always ready, equipped, and capable of responding to the needs of our constituents. As we all know, the municipality of Ragay continues to pursue programs that will improve the lives of our people, from infrastructure and disaster resilience to health services, livelihood support, and environmental management. However, given the limitation of our annual revenue sources, the unpredictable timing of national fund release, and substantial decrease in the national tax allotment, there are instances when financial resources become insufficient or delayed, thereby slowing down project implementation. This proposed borrowing authority will serve as a standby financing mechanism, a responsible, well-structured arrangement with the Development Bank of the Philippines that allows the municipal government to access funds when needed under favorable terms and only for duly identified priority development projects. Let me emphasize, this, this measure is not about incurring unnecessary debts, but rather about ensuring readiness and fiscal resilience. It will enable us to respond quickly to development opportunities, counterpart fund requirements, and urgent community needs without compromising ongoing services or financial stability. The proposed ordinance also laid down clear guidelines and safeguards for the availability and utilization of the fund, ensuring that every peso borrowed is used prudently, transparently, and strictly for priority purposes in accordance with the rules of the Department of Finance and the Bureau of Local Government Finance. Moreover, this initiative reflects sound fiscal management and forward planning under the leadership of our municipal mayor, Honorable Benji G. Hurbata, who envisions a proactive, responsive, and development-driven local government. I am deeply grateful to my co-sponsors, Counselor Annabel Al. Liao Bres, Counselor Domingo Isedo, Counselor Petrinil G. Mercado, Counselor Ricardo B. Aquino, Counselor Romanos Isulit, Counselor Roderick El. Sandagon, Counselor Julio A. Arrow, ABC President Alan Angeles, and SK Fed Chairman Walter M. Ehre, for their confidence in this measure and for their shared commitments to advancing the welfare and progress of our constituents. In closing, Mr. Presiding Officer, this ordinance is about empowerment, preparedness, and responsible governance, and by proving this measure, we are giving our municipality the tools to move faster, plan better, and deliver more for our people today and the years ahead. Thank you, and we will continue to work together for a better, greater, and happier Ragay.
But it's not the pleasure of the sponsor.
I move that this draft ordinance number thirteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, after the public hearings done, be calendared on the second final reading on the next regular session.
To be calendared for third and final.
Third and final reading on the, the next regular session on November ten, twenty-twenty-five.
There is a motion that it be, yes, uh, Counselor Sedo is recognized. No, no, just a- Final. Uh, resolution. Resolution, okay.
Resolution, consi. Because if you're not there-
Authorizing her to sign for a specific project. Kasi walang specific yan.
Kasi wala pa po jan general amount, Thomas, Arigana she, borrow.
Actually, walang amount jan ah. Walang amount, kasi doon sa resolution, may amount, per, per project, may resolution. Thank you very much. So there is a motion that it be calendared for third and final reading on the next regular session. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Next.
Next is for draft ordinance number sixteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, an ordinance authorizing the grant of limited welfare benefit to job order personnel of the local government, Unit of Ragay, specifically personal accident insurance, subject to availability of funds, and existing auditing civil service and budgetary rules authored by Vice Mayor Giovanni A. Senyar, sponsored by counselors Linau, Liao Bres, Sedo, Mercado, Aquino, Sulit, Sandagon, Arrow, Angeles, and Ehre.
Before I call the sponsor, uh, with your indulgence, ano, at the domain, ano nitong ordinance, siguro, i- i amend 'yung title, kasi hindi na pala magbibigyan 'yung ibang benefits. So the suggested title would be, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Grant of Personal Accident Insurance, Subject to Availability of Funds and Existing Auditing Civil Service and Budgetary Rules." Yun na siguro po 'yung magiging amended, uh, title.
Noted, Mr. Chair. So good morning, Mr. Chair. So this is draft ordinance number sixteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Five, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Grant of Personal Accident Insurance, Subject to Availability of Funds and Existing Auditing Civil Service and Budgetary Rules." Subject to Availability of Funds and Existing Auditting Civil Service and Budgetary Rules. So, uh, this had been discussed before, but with a different entities, but now we just limited it to the Personal Accident Insurance Subject for Availability of Funds. So this is Draft Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2025.
The, as far as I can remember, 380 lang po, 380.
380 lang?
415.
450?
415.
415? Dabi, oo, dabi, oo. 450 plus na yun.
450, sir, nakaano tayo, naka-bas...
This year's 415. Consi Sedo, 415.
Nakasunod naman?
380.
Then, nung binigyan natin ng 415, 380 pa lang. Tapos ni-increase, so nakasabay pa rin tayo.
The previous term, 380. Pag opo ni ma'am, 415, 415 na yun.
415?
415 po.
415 lang?
Ang unang entry, 415. Yung mga driver, kaysa mas toxic sila, ginawa ni ma'am na 450, 450. J O, pero yung common employees, 415.
So there's a, do you have a motion?
So, uh, I move that, since we had, uh, in addition to that, actually, the Algyra guys already giving, uh, Personal Accident Insurance, kasama na po yun sa annual budget natin. Inianan lang natin, consi Sedo, iniinstitutionalize lang natin. So I move for the adoption of this, uh, committee report regarding the...
Mr. Chair, uh, motion for to open the period of amendments.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to open the period of discussion for Draft Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2025.
Uh, sufficiently discussed already, Mr. Chair. You move for the closing?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the period of discussion for Draft Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2025.
The period of discussion is closed.
Mr. Chair, I move to open the period of amendment for Draft Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2025.
I think you have an amendment, the amendment to the title.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to close the period of amendment for Draft Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2025.
The period of amendments closed.
Mr. Chair, I move that this Draft Ordinance Number 2, or Draft Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2025 be calendared, and the third and final reading on the next regular session comes November 10, 2025.
Calendared for third and final reading on the next regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next?
Next is for Draft Ordinance Number 17 Series of 2025, An Ordinance Establishing an Animal Bite Treatment Center Under the Municipal Health Office in the Municipality of Ragai and Providing Funds Thereof, sponsored by Councilor Linau.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, in this August body. So this is Draft Ordinance Number 17 Series of 2025, An Ordinance Establishing an Animal Bite Treatment Center Under Municipal Head Office in the Municipality of Ragai and Providing Funds Thereof. So Honorable Presiding Officers, team colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Our rest today is sponsored Draft Ordinance Number 17 Series of 2025 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing an Animal Bite Treatment Center Under the Municipal Health Office in the Municipality of Ragai and Providing Funds Thereof." Every year, hundreds of Filipinos, many of them children, fall victim to animal bites, most commonly from dogs and cats. While some of these incidents may seem minor, they can lead to rabies infection, a disease that is almost fatal once symptoms appear, but 100% preventable with timely and proper medical intervention. In our own municipality, the case of animal bites have been rising, especially in our barangays. Many of our constituents, particularly those in far-flung areas, face difficulty in accessing anti-rabies vaccines and treatment services due to the absence of a dedicated facility within the municipality. This situation puts the health and safety of our people, especially our children, at unnecessary risk. This proposed ordinance seeks to establish an animal bite treatment center under the Municipal Health Office. The center will serve as a permanent, accessible, and accredited facility that provides immediate post-exposure prophylaxis and vaccination. By institutionalizing an animal bite treatment center, we will ensure timely and appropriate treatment to prevent rabies transmission and death, strengthen local capacity for rabies prevention and control in coordination with the Department of Health and the Provincial Health Office, promote public awareness on responsible pet ownership, animal vaccination in rabies prevention, and integrate this service into our existing health programs under the Municipal Health Office for sustainability and efficiency. This measure aligns with Republic Act Number 9482 or the Anti-Rabies Act of 2007, which mandates local government units to take the lead in implementing rabies prevention and control programs, including establishment of animal bite treatment centers. The proposed ordinance likewise ensures that funds shall be appropriated for the operation and maintenance of the center subject to availability of resources and compliance with existing budgetary and auditing rules. This means our approach is not only compassionate, but also compliant and physically responsible. My dear colleagues, public health is a shared responsibility, and rabies prevention is one of the most achievable public health victories we can secure. For every life saved from this internally preventable disease, we uphold our commitment to protect the most vulnerable, especially our children and families in rural areas. As public servant and officer, I have seen firsthand the suffering caused by the delayed treatment or lack of access to vaccines. This ordinance will ensure no family in Ragai will ever lose a loved one to rabies simply because help was too far away. Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished members of this August body, this measure is not just a health initiative, it is a commitment to life, safety, and compassion. By approving this ordinance, we take a decisive step toward a rabies-free Ragai, one that values both human welfare and responsible animal care. Thank you, and may our actions today continue to protect and uplift the health and well-being of every reganus. So, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this, uh, Draft Ordinance Number 17 and move to calibrate this for the third and final reading on November 10, 2025.
The Chair, we would like to commend the sponsor for, uh, spearheading this measure by providing the, uh, the necessary as well as the... This will solve the perennial problem of, uh, of lack of anti-rabies vaccine para sa mga kababayan natin. And by sponsoring this, maraming problema ang masosol, marami ang masosolusyonan. Simple act like, act like this means a lot to an ordinary kababayan natin po. So again, I would like to thank the sponsor for sponsoring such a measure and also commend the whole Sanggunan Bayan for being very supportive to this kind of measures. So palakpakan po natin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and esteemed members of this chamber.
So, uh, is there any amendment to, that you would like to make to this, uh, measure? Meron po ba? So if there's no amendment, the, let us terminate. If the, if the sponsor is willing, let us terminate the period of amendments.
If everybody agrees, you terminate the period of amendment and we go for the calendaring this the third and final reading on November 10, 2025.
So this is calendared for third and final reading in the next regular session. It's ordered. Next?
Next is for the announcements.
Session, same time, same day, next week. Committee meetings po. Councilor Liabres is recognized.
Committee meeting on public utilities, uh, tomorrow po, at Esbilang at 2 o'clock in the afternoon po. 2 P.M. po.
2 P.M., noted. 2 P.M. daw sa aga. Councilor Sedo is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, with the committee on this series, there will be committee meeting, uh, tomorrow, uh, after lunch. Maybe 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Noted. Meron pa po? Councilor Sandagon is recognized.
Sir Chairman, a committee meeting on tomorrow then after the committee meeting by Sedo. Thank you po.
Noted. May announcement pa po? Yes, the Dr. Linau is recognized.
Committee meeting, so I learned that everybody will be visiting, Councilor Angki with BM. So after po nun, pagbalik natin, committee meeting po ng Finance and Appro regarding barangay supplemental budget ng Agropasion, Benesuete, Kabadisan, Kabuga Kawain. Madali lang naman to today. And then good government, kasama natin si ma'am, mahalin dito sa budget meeting. Good government about the, uh, Mowa with the LCE, tungkol sa gula yun sa barangay with, uh, Mau, Mr. Benedict Almarion. And then dito sa fishing orders sa Coast Guard, si, sino ba pinatawag?
Sila rin po. Agriculture din po yan.
Agriculture, isa na rin kay Mr. Almarion. Asama. Asama na, si budget, mahalin sa inyo. Thank you po. After nating pumunta kay Councilor Angki.
Noted. May announcement pa po? Wala na, so please, ay, ano SK?
Ayun, inaantay ko po kasi mag, ano si Kagawat Ricky sa loss and review. Uh, may sasabihin po sana ako regarding sa pag-review niyo ng SK annual budget. There were two mandatory projects po kasi na pagni-review niyo ang annual budget. There were two mandatory projects po ang annual budget ng Sanggunan Kabataan. It's first is the anti-drug campaign po, the anti-drug campaign, and then the other one is the Linggo ng Kabataan. It is under the Republic Act 10742 po of the, or the SK, Revised SK Reform Act. Dapat meron po nun, please review po kasi minsan po nakakaligtahan po kasing i-review yun nung budget. Uh, kailangan po, under peace building and security, may anti-drug, uh, illegal drugs program po, tapos, tapos may isa pong Linggo ng Kabataan. Loss and review po iyan. Ay, sa apro po, ay, sa apro po pala yun.
So, uh, SK, I suggest that you provide the chairman of the Finance and Appropriations Committee a checklist of the mandatory, uh, items that should be contained in the SK Federation.
Yes po, noted po, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you so much po.
So, ano, announcement po, la tayo pupunta kay former Councilor Angki Ulanio. After the session, dadali natin yung ating resolution. Ano, piniprint na, piniprint na. So, wala na pong announcement? Yes, Councilor Mercado is recognized. There's a motion to adjourn. Just seconded, this session is adjourned.